Good evening, everyone. I would like to rejoin the Thursday, October, sorry, Thursday, August eighth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting of Lake Forest Board of Education. If you would join me for pledge allegiance.
Aye. Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, happy August, everybody, not October, happy August. Welcome, everyone who has joined online, as well as those who are here in person. Just a reminder that our meeting tonight is being streamed across the internet and the meeting minutes, as well as the recording will be posted once they are finalized. We'll start tonight with a roll call of board members. Mrs. McCloskey.
Here.
This is Mr. Ratt, there, Vice President Stark, and Earl Dempsey's president, serving as chairs, president as well. We have four board members present. Thank you all for being here. Move on to two point four approval of agenda, Mrs. Stark.
Two point four, make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion on floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Two point five, approval of minutes and make a motion, we approve the minutes from the June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
The motion on floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Staying.
Motion carries three to zero with one abstention.
And staying at two point five, make a motion, we approve the minutes from the July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, the organization meeting.
Second. Motion on floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero. Section two point six, recognition presentations. We don't have anything official this evening, however, there is a very important recognition that we would like to make. We have a very important new administrative staff person that we're all very excited about, Dr. Lucas.
Good evening, everybody, and I didn't prepare Mrs. Gavalo to be introduced, but I'm really excited to welcome Mrs. Angeline Lovello, the new principal of Lake Forest High School to the team, so. Lovello comes to us with a wealth of experience in a number of administrative roles. Maybe that, I don't wanna give it, give it all away. We'll let people find out how great you are on your own, but this is your opportunity. You want to share anything?
It's been, it's been a great first week. I started on Monday officially. I came in a couple times before that. Met a few kids, met the band, so that was exciting. I can't wait for all the students to come back to the building, but I'm really excited to be here. It's been a great week. Everybody's been welcoming and lots of information, but it's really great. Thank you all.
Welcome. Thank you, welcome. So you do, you join a very solid team, both in your building, in all of our buildings, in this building. And we're just, we're very excited to have you leave our flagship, so welcome again.
Thank you. Came during a big weekend, it was parking permit purchase meeting.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lucas. We're on to section two point seven, citizens' participation. Each board meeting, we set aside the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any topics they wish. If anyone in person wished to address the board, we'd ask you to sign up at the front table and present that to the superintendent's office. At this point, we have no one signed up, so we will close our public comment period and it will reopen prior to our next board meeting. With that, we'll move on to section three, reports. We started off with three point one, financial reports. Mr. Kirk Kellman, welcome, Mr. Kellman.
Good evening. This evening, we do have the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four monthly financial report. Our unique opportunity at the end of the year to see how we concluded the fiscal year against our budgeted numbers and to see how we closed out the fiscal year. And so for the revenue side on the state, we did end the year with an increase of over four and a half million dollars just from state receipts, which is about ten percent from the prior year, driven really primarily by that higher unit count number that we had back in, in September. With that, we collected about a little over two hundred and seventy thousand more than we were expecting in state discretionary, those blue lines that contributed to our discretionary budget. So moving on to the local side, then, our current expense tax receipts. Those are higher due to the increased interest rate we collected this past year on our local funds, and that gets captured in that current expense line right now, but I'm gonna be moving that down to the other local revenue line for this upcoming fiscal year, because I think that way it doesn't distort our current expense tax receipts number, gives us a little bit more of a pure number there when we talk about current expense tax receipts. Let's see, moving on, the impact fees up twenty-two percent from the prior year. I expected that to be really pretty much flat. I didn't think that there was gonna be much real estate development in the district, especially with the high mortgage rates. We had three hundred and fifty-one thousand in that line a couple of years ago, but three hundred and forty-seven, that's pretty much close to a high for us for impact fees, so that's good news for the district. The only reason we had misses in those next four categories, the ninety-eight percent through the ninety-eight percent on those next four areas in the local funds, is we never received our final senior property tax credit payment from the state. That transaction didn't get completed in time prior to the end of the fiscal year, so we ended up getting that like the second week of July, so it never made it into this report, but had it made it into that report, we would have exceeded our budget targets in all those areas. And then we had that other local revenue, which was a huge beat, primarily because we had all those collections of indirect costs from the carry funds. So there was about, I think, four hundred, over four hundred thousand just in indirect costs that we collected from the, the final installment of that carry grant. On the federal side, Title One was really the only grant where we saw a decline in the award amount for this past year and in the final allocation total. So overall, we collected a hundred and four percent of our budgeted discretionary funds compared to a hundred and two percent last year, and we collected a hundred and two percent of all funds budgeted compared to a hundred and one percent last year. Overall discretionary revenues as a total were up two point four million from last year, so that's quite a bit when we, when we look at that. Half of that was really what we were expecting from the referendum increase, so about one point two million just from that tax increase. The other half was, you know, we had over six hundred thousand dollars in interest payments, which, you know, a couple of years ago, we had zero in interest payments. And that was a big boon to our, our local revenues. We had that indirect expense recovery there that I talked about earlier, and then just the higher district, state discretionary funds, just because of what, we had such a high unit count number this past year. So all those contributed to us having an increase of two point four million, just on those discretionary revenues. So, any questions on the revenue side?
Any questions for Mr. Kellman on revenue? Any idea why that tax payment was late, the tax credit payment? So, they provide a reason?
Yeah, we kept submitting it, and then they sent it back, and there was in how we, we name it, we called it an IT, I think, versus an IV or maybe vice versa. And so they kicked it back to us for some reason, yet we had done it correctly. And so when we submitted it back and said, we, we did this form correctly, we submitted the IT correctly, it was too late to do anything about it. It was like a day past the deadline to get that in by the end of the fiscal year.
Close the system.
And they didn't notify us to do this until there was like a week left in the, you know, to process transactions in the fiscal year anyway. So it was very late in us receiving that, that opportunity to put that in.
Who does that go through? Does that go through? It comes from O and B?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Kurt.
All right, moving on to the expenditure side. We saw just a total discretionary spend increase of one point four million. So here's where, you know, throughout that process of the referendum, we said we were gonna experience a big increase in costs, and we did. We saw one point four million increase in costs. And, and most of that really was the local salary side, about, you know, close to a million of it was the local salary side. But technology was another big factor, and that's something that we advertised throughout the referendum, as well, as well as transportation. So those were some of the bigger increases in spending this past year. As we look down at the individual lines, just some areas to point out that where the, we went over budget, water sewer went over budget, and that's only because we had fifteen thousand dollars in covered on a purchase order, and probably we really, really only needed to carry over maybe about five thousand versus, you know, fifteen thousand, so that would have kept that line in budget. Transportation match went over budget. That was because of the huge jump we've had in the homeless transportation costs, and that continues to be an issue each year in terms of our transportation match. The visiting teacher vehicle purchase, we've talked about that in prior meetings. And then further down towards the bottom, we had the budgeted contracted teacher in the final budget last year, and we chose to discontinue that service right around the final budget approval time, and so we never incurred any costs associated with that, because the person that we had that was filling in on that position didn't work out too well for us. So that's why you're seeing a zero cost there for a kind of a large budget item. Then we go to page two, and we look at the schools, three out of the six schools pretty much maxed out their entire budget for the year, so we're starting to see those, those pressures mount within, you know, inflation and so forth with the school budgets as well. All right. So we had three percent of our discretionary budget remaining compared to five percent last year. So a little bit tighter on the tolerances. And then on the non-discretionary budget, the state covered that six percent contingency portion that went over budget towards the top. You can see state transportation was over projection by over three hundred thousand, and that's why our local match went up as well. We discussed the issues we're having with the driver ed funding and the cost of the fleet vehicles increasing significantly. And then our technology match was over budget. But we have a little bit of a balance in that fund to absorb that each year, but there was an issue with how it was being depicted in our data service system that captures those costs. And so that was one of the things that led to why that kind of slipped past us in terms of picking up that extra expense, so. And we finished the year with seven percent of all funds budget remaining compared to eight percent last year. So any questions on the expenditure side of the budget?
Questions for Mr. Kellman on this report? So, so this is the report we see each year at the end of the year. Well, we see it each month, but, you know, at the end of the year, it gives us the final picture of where we ended up versus what we had planned with our budget. Couple of things that you said during the discussion, though, I think are very relevant and important, and I know I would like to see as well. How difficult, Kurt, is it for you to produce a report that simply shows each category with the expended number this year versus the expended number last year?
For the end of the year report?
Yeah, just, just once a year at the end of the year, and then, you know, if we just do that, let's say we do that now, just year over year, and then potentially each year now we add it in that. I know, I know you look at it, but from a board perspective would maybe allow us to see some of the trends. I mean, we talk about, we talk about bright costs going up. We talk about expending more money. I think you mentioned we were one point four million more in its local expenses this year, but we, we don't really see that on this report. I think it would be important for us to see. So is that something we could do, again, not on a monthly basis? Right, just an annual basis, when we look at the final budget versus expense, we also look at year over year expense.
Yeah, and, and I'm guessing that you would want to see the actual expenditures, because I know one of the things, we capture both the encumbrances and the expenditures, and so we kind of consider the both of those in that category. But a lot of those encumbrances don't really get expended until the first couple of months of the next fiscal year.
I, I think I would want to see. So if I look, just pick a category here. If I look at North Elementary, their budget was fifty-four. They spent twenty-four encumbered for, so I, I would want to, I, I would want to see what, what this budget reflects. This reflects that we only have eighty-three hundred left in that budget, because we spent twenty-four, we expended, I encumbered twenty-one, so we actually, in this budget for the year, are spending forty-three. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So to answer your question, you see both, yes, both.
Both. I, but you don't need to, if not, you're not gonna see a true picture. They don't need to see them two separate columns.
Right.
But really, frankly, whatever's easiest to produce. I, I think probably what I would do is just combine them into one column.
Combine them into one column, yes.
Yeah.
So then the question I would have, based off your comment, would it be better to wait for this report until we're a few months into the next budget that way, that encumbered numbers low, because it's, you know, you mentioned that a lot of these things don't actually get paid out till we're a few months into the next season. So instead of having it right at the end of that budget year, wait a month or two and do it a couple of months in that way, you're seeing basically a true picture of what was actually spent. They received.
Yeah. I think if I would combine them as an expenditure plus encumbrances, because we're basically saying they're committed.
Yes.
We've already committed these funds. And so.
And there may, it may come back a little less. We may not actually spend the encumbrance, and that just rules.
Right, right.
But so.
But, I asked.
Yes.
When?
Yes, we'll ask you.
Don't you, once a year, do a financial, like a overall, but not, or is this mainly it? Because normally you would show us a graph that has like, I was wondering, and it might not be this meeting.
District reserve?
With the district reserve, like through the years, like just letting us, I, I like seeing it that way, just to see where we've been, the trends, kind of like what are you saying, I mean, you want to see them more specifics, but I like to see that year over year and reserve.
I think we typically see that during the budget.
That's what I.
Process. Yep.
Yeah.
So that, we first see that, what month?
Well, I know I presented that graph in particular in the final budget in January.
Okay.
To see where we, we ended from previous years. You'll get your first glimpse of that with a financial position report at the next board meeting at the end of the month, because I'll present the financial position report to see how we finished the year. So you'll have that, at least that raw number of what we finished the year for our district reserve. And then I'll also present the preliminary budget, but in the preliminary budget, I don't have that graph, but I can add that graph to the preliminary budget, and that won't be a problem.
Yeah. That, that would get us to see that sooner.
Yeah. I do, I, just because we're tying it all up, I'd like to just kind of see that part, too.
Sure.
And I think we're just, we're very, we're due to the recent referendum and, and especially now, you know, the, the tax rate, the reassessment that we just went through all of that, and I think we're much more in tune with it, and we'd like to be a little closer to it to, to see how some of these decisions we've had to make, how how they worked out, and as well as if the factors upon which we made those decisions are actually turning out to be reality.
Absolutely, so.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. It's more so seeing. And we kind of talk about these things, eight percent last year, this, but you know, and it, it's kind of just hard to remember a year over year, so I do like few things, seeing that graph to just kind of remind me where we were, and, and seeing what these decisions that have been made, and especially with the new tax, you just kind of want to see it. You don't want to, where we've always been super proud of how financially conservative we are and tend to be and want to stay, and kind of just seeing that year knowing what it is every year is one thing, and we know it, but I mean, that year over year would be kind of like bad, that.
And as well, from a public perspective, right, if I, if I look at this and I look at our discretionary funds and we say we have four hundred thousand dollars left in our budget. And the question then is, well, you know, if you had four hundred thousand dollars that you thought you were going to spend that you didn't spend, why did you need a referendum? Well, in actuality, what's missing here is that our expenses were actually up one point four million, right?
Yes.
Right, so. So that, that's great, thank you. Any other questions on this report? So much comment, I did have one other topic, one question I wanted to bring up, and I did give you, give you a heads up on it today as well. So today, we received the local funds performance audit. It was sent out by the auditor's office statewide for fiscal year twenty-two. And so four districts in the state listed as no findings, the rest had findings. We were listed as one with a couple findings. So just wanted to hear from you a brief overview of that report and, and such. Sure. So one of the, the cover pages on that report talks about the audit will be addressing the following areas, and it talks about tax rate setting process, payments for services and supplies, and then employee compensation and payroll processing. And I know from those three areas, I mean, we regard all of those as extremely important, but I consider tax rate setting processes incredibly important, and same with employee compensation and payroll processing, I consider those incredibly important, because we want to make sure we're paying people timely and appropriately and what they should be paid, and we want to make sure that we're doing what we need to in terms of the tax rates for the, the taxpayers in the district. Now, that doesn't belittle the payments and services and supplies, but that's where that audit finding was, was in payments for services and supplies. Now, I had started to look through some of those other districts, and, and some of those other districts had areas that were in employee compensation and payroll processing. I didn't see anything really in, in tax rate setting processes, but as far as the findings that we received, it was really one finding with two items, because the one finding was in reference to our purchasing procedures, and the one is in, was in reference to purchasing a used lawnmower, and these particular lawnmowers are incredibly expensive. And so when Carl found one used, that was about, you know, less than half the price of a new one, he jumped at that opportunity. And so the criticism from the auditor was not from a sense of having to get more bids, but we didn't have any documentation in the file to say that we had a actual quote of a new lawnmower of that, you know, size and caliber. So I think that's the only thing we could have improved. Other than that, I, I mean, if you want to hit me for trying to save the district money, okay, I'll take it, you know. So that was one, and, and so in the future, I think, you know, we would probably just try to find, if we found a used piece of equipment, we would just try to get a a new quote for that piece of equipment and store it behind that in the, when we pay that, you know, particularly invoice. The other item was in reference to purchasing sports equipment between the middle school and the high school. And so their belief was that we should try to, those purchases combined exceeded the amount in the budget and accounting manual for requiring us to get two other bids, basically. And so once we exceed ten thousand dollars in supplies or, or non-professional services, the, the manual told us we're supposed to get three bids. And so in this particular instance, I think we spent twenty-one thousand between the two schools. So my comment to the auditors, and it will always be, is that these schools operate as separate cost centers, and we don't aggregate those purchases at the district, and I don't ever intend to aggregate those purchases at the district level. Because, I mean, if we took that approach with everything, you know, we'd be trying to warehouse things, you know, making purchases for, you know, sporting goods or, or whatever, paper and things like that. We don't have a warehouse to put all that at, at the district level. So we have eighteen cost managers across the district that have budgets that are assigned to them, and so those two athletic directors are a couple of those cost center managers, and they oversee their budgets, and I let them manage their budgets as they see fit. So you know, I'll argue that with the auditors every day, that I still think that that should be decentralized down to those cost center managers and not a district purchase. So, but I did express to them that in the future, they have changed those purchasing thresholds since then, the division of accounting, and they've gotten a lot better, so now it's even up to fifty thousand dollars before we even have to go out for three bids. So it's gone from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand in a matter of two years, just to give you an idea how outdated the ten thousand is. So, you know, that, those increases were long overdue. But since then, we try to find, find other districts that may have gone out to bid for these. And so for instance, I might have, I think Red Clay or Colonial might have gone out and competitively bid the athletic equipment contract. And so I, in those instances, I typically ask the business manager at those districts, can we piggyback off of your contract, and that's usually the standard practices. Some of the smaller districts will piggyback off of the larger districts who actually go out to bid for some of these services, because we don't have a purchasing team, given the size of our district. And, and those are unique skill sets. Talk about, you know, creating those, those RFPs, those request or proposals, and going out to bid for that kind of stuff.
And I, I do, I agree with your last statement, ninety-nine percent. The, the one percent would be that, obviously, if we were spending a million dollars in an aggregate on something, it would be worth our while to spend the, the, the money to try and save it, but for twenty-one thousand, we're gonna spend more money trying to, to try to bring it together than what we would actually end up saving.
Yeah.
So. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this report? So if I may just give my, my unfettered comments, so I do believe the, the finding and everything, I did find them fairly minor. As with anything, though, there's, you know, there's obviously lessons to learn from it, and I think it's, they're good lessons going forward, but I think they were very minor things. And this, this topic has always been a thorn in my side, knowing that this audit we pay ourselves, we're legislatively mandated to pay for ourselves. I think the numbers you gave me was the previous one was seventeen thousand dollars. We paid, this one, we paid eighty-five hundred for. Even if we had saved twenty percent on the two items that they found us for, we were still paying more for the audit for them to tell us that.
Indeed.
And it's, it's really just burns here.
Yeah. And it's, I'll, I'll be honest, it's exhausting, the amount of audits that we go through. I think we, we were going through a total of eight this past year. We look at like position audits and local fund audits and, you know, the state's single audit, so.
I mean, to do the right thing and to buy a used lawnmower for thirty-four thousand when a new one is eighty thousand, and to say, well, you know, it's gonna be a finding because we didn't follow certain procedures, like, what are we doing? What are we doing? So. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Anybody else, any other comments, questions for Mr. Kellman? Thanks, sir. Three point two, superintendent report, Dr. Lucas.
Onto happier topics. Good evening, Spartan family. We hope everyone's summer's going well, and everyone's looking forward to school's opening in less than a month. It's been a great summer with tons of learning going on. Thank you to the many staff who participated in the extended school year at Central in Camp Illinois. Of course, high school had hosted summer school. We had about two hundred and fifty-nine students participate in the Spartan Summer Success Academy. These students completed almost three thousand hours of math and reading. Thanks, Mr. Dick and his team for taking the initiative, for keeping the learning going over the summer, as well as everybody in here who took part in any summer learning. It's great to keep the kids engaged over the summer. This week, I was invited to attend the meet, a meeting at the Kent County Levy Court, where two of our Spartan coaches, Fred Johnson and Mr. Dominique Hall, were awarded life-saving medals for their actions on June eleventh, when one of our student athletes suffered a cardiac incident. I'll just read some of the language from their award. "Thanks to the bravery, knowledge, and initiative of these fine coaches, the life of our student was saved. Moreover, the victim's family and entire Lake Forest community were saved from a lifetime of grief. Their professional response to this life-threatening incident went beyond expectations, and they deserve the highest praise for their selfless devotion to life and saving. We will be recognizing these men at the back-to-school celebration on August twenty-sixth, and we are totally grateful and proud of their actions that day." So thanks to those gentlemen and the Levy Court for recognizing them. I wanted to say thank the many Spartans who came out to the state fair. That was fun. I was out at the fair several days, and it didn't take long to run into someone from Lake Forest. Our students earned many awards, and we'll be recognizing many of them right here in this room at a later meeting. So we all know agriculture is so important in the future of our country and our world, and here in Lake Forest, we take that very seriously. As I said, we're less than a month from school's opening on September third. There are many things to do between now and then, and a lot of welcome back, welcome back events are on the calendar, so please check your school's website so you know what's going on. If you don't know where, look for the information, give your school a call, or give us a call here at the central office, and we will get you in contact with the person you need. With school opening also comes school sports. Please remember to get your students their physicals so they can start training with their teams. Remember to buy your tickets. Uh, to game events online as soon as possible. Links to purchase tickets are available on the high school website. And if you have trouble accessing the website or just you need a hand, give the high school a call in the main office or give us a call here and we'll help you out. Uh, middle school games are still free, which is the best deal in town. Uh, that's all I have. I thank you. I yield the floor back to President Dempsey for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Any questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas and superintendent review? This is Starkey.
Where can you get the passes? Where are they located?
The annual passes?
Yeah.
You can buy them at the main office.
At the high school?
Yes, ma'am. And um, I'm not sure if we've got them here yet. We were selling them at central office as well last year. I don't know if we have next this year's passes yet.
Do we also have it on? Do we also provide the ability to buy them at Chipman?
Well, that's a good question. Dr. Cooper, are you guys selling them at Chipman, do you know, annual passes for high school games? I don't think we sell them at any other high schools. Any principals, we don't sell them at your schools, so.
Middle school might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, could you support it? I I don't think volume would be high. Could you support it at Chipman?
We'll make that happen.
Hi.
Mrs. McCloskey.
One more thing, and I meant to um bring it up earlier and I forgot, um. It looks as though we're doing some changes with soccer for middle school. Can you kind of fill us in on that?
Yeah, great question. So we're um redoing the. Field at um deck where the kids used to play soccer, normally play soccer. Uh, we are actually, we got Mr. Star back there, so I'm going to give you my version and he'll probably give you the real version, but. We're talking about stripping that field down, getting rid of all the ruts and the. Um, the weeds and the the lumps the kids tend to trip over and get injured. Re- reseating it, completely reseating it with a sports turf. We're installing a um. High, what do you call irrigation system? So it's going to take, it's going to stay, it's going to be great. And then we're putting up a fence around it. So that it's a real kind of higher quality field for the kids to play on. Uh, but unfortunately, we won't be able to play on it this year. Uh, because it's going to take a, you know, a year for that seed to take and be be worthy of of play. But I know uh Mr. Pearson has got the practice schedule and the game schedule all squared away. I forget, they're playing in Hart District. And uh, and then they are going to play a game here at the high school, I'm sure, as well.
Well, it did say, because I will say I looked at, I'm starting to get my calendar ready for all my, you know, everything, studies, every day, and finish. And um, the schedule did say Harrington Parks Rec for all their games. But now it says the Bermuda Field at the high school for all our games.
All the games or?
I I think that they were switching it. I know that um our new athletic director was working on switching things over.
Okay, so it's going to probably be at the high school? So what about practices?
They are supposed to be at Carrington Parks Rec.
So they'll have transportation every day?
Yeah, so we're working on that right now.
Okay. I just saw it and I went to ask that that's going to be quite a change here coming up soon, so.
I had to talk to Mr. Pearson about it last week and he is definitely on it, so it is be taken care of and. They'll have a great field to play on um over there at Deck eventually.
Thanks for asking. Is that is that anticipated both fall and spring that will be out or Mr. Star will be ready by spring?
We're hoping to be ready by spring.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm just thrilled to see me a fence because in the initial report I read, I didn't see a fence and I was like, man, how do you keep those dogs out because they're going to care that field?
Good to hear. Yeah, we're going to take the uh that old. Awful looking fence down, get rid of it, and then we're going to fence in the field, uh, so it's nice and.
People love to walk their dogs over there.
Contained, yeah. Is it a chip as well?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lucas. Anything further? All right, thank you again. We'll move on. Uh, three point three, we have school safety report from Mr. Dustin Weller. Welcome, Mr. Weller.
Welcome, good evening. Um, so I wanted to do a uh brief. Update on the report that I gave in June, um, concerning school safety and some of the projects that are going on throughout the district and also. Um, a project that we are working on for the upcoming school year. Uh, so. As we left off in the summer, um, we were underway um with Chipman getting a brand new camera system. Uh, basically, we were converting to a cloud-based system. Uh, where we didn't have to store data for so long or buy extra storage or do things like that. It would be kept on the cloud. Um, so so far, our camera systems have been installed at East Deck, Chipman North, South, and they're finishing up at Central. Um, Central is the final uh camera project that we are completing for last year. And then once Central is completed, we'll be moving on to increasing the camera footage at the high school. Um, there are still some areas at the high school we need to hit, but also too, that will be on a cloud-based system um here soon. So we are working on that and getting that clear. Um, another project that we worked on was um. We have moved the um the player scoreboard. Um, from one side of the gym to the other at the high school, so that way now we can have the benches and the scorer's table on the locker room side of the gym. Um, so then that way, when fans are emptying out of the gym, they're not crossing players leaving the gym. Um, so we're trying to de-escalate any type of uh potential issues or problems that could come from that. So we are making some reversals and some changes in the gym, but that project has been completed as well. Um, Dr. Lucas mentioned the incident on June eleventh at the high school. Um, after every incident that that does occur, we go back and we reflect, we celebrate what we did well. Um, and then we also look at, you know, the improvements that we need to make. Um, and we did see a couple of areas where we need to um up our AED game and take a look at some things. Maybe not so much specific to this event, but to potential other events outside of that. Um, so we have uh Felton Fire Company has donated us one AED and we have another AED on order. And also two, um, really, um. Now with the uh offseason training schedule, the way that it is, is really making sure that we have all those medical things that are that are definitely in place. So we can string to action and so um our staff is as effective as the staff was that was at the high school on that day. So moving on, so as we have gone through. The summer and we we've seen things evolve throughout the state and we've talked about events, um, we've had a lot of discussion. On um potentially looking at weapons detection systems at our athletic events particularly for large events at. At our schools or campuses. Um, so really what we've done is um. We spent a lot of time uh seeing demos, both both online and in person, um, myself, Gary Fournier, uh, Dr. Lucas. Um, Mr. Kellman, um, we've we've heard and seen from different vendors and different people. And uh had different talks throughout, um, and really, um, we're reaching a point that um. We are really um recommending or looking at going with weapon detection systems at our major events. Um, throughout the district. Um, we really feel that you're at a point now with technology and the way things are shaping up. That we're not walking through old-fashioned metal detectors, empty your pockets, go like this. Walk through, pick up your stuff. Basically, a lot of things are like a walkthrough, like I I know many of you probably went to the fair. And when you went to the fair, you walked right through detection systems and basically a lot of detection systems now. Have technology where they're able to identify the type of metal that you may have on you. Um, the size of a of a item that you may have on you. And they're really set to really specify, you know, your chances of having a weapon on you, and it's just basically a walkthrough. So we're really looking at 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 these weapon detection systems for our athletic events to keep um our fans and spectators, our players. Um, safe and our community safe. Um, these detection systems are portable, um, they can be used outdoors in weather, uh, they're minimally evasive. Um, and um they are used to identify firearms, large weapons, and we're looking at using uh. Various funds such as uh uh our jewel lawsuit, safety and security funds, different things like that to fund these these items. Um, so. In our next slide, these are the districts or or schools that um either have them. In place now or are looking at having them in place for this season um for events. So if you look at it, um, districts in Indian River and Seaford. Um, are going to be implementing them this year. Laurel, Capital, Woodbridge, Newcastle County, Go Tech, Apo, Cape and Sally's. Um, there are some other districts in the area that are uh are not listed, but they're also in the exploration phase. Um, as we are in in looking at these systems, some of them are in different stages than others. Um, but um, just wanted to give you guys. You know, if you're going to a a larger sporting event. In the conference, chances are you are going to have to pass through one of these devices uh coming up here in the next. Calendar year. Um, we did have. An incident um last year at Sussex Central High School, um, there was an incident at Apo High School two years ago, um, that involved um. Weapons and and things like that. We just want to try to do as many deterrents as possible. Um, to try to deter these events from happening on our campus. Um. When we talk about the process for using these detection systems. This is, this was, this is an evolving process. So if we were to uh to purchase. Um, these these detection systems, our goal would be to. Keep track of flowing. We do not want to have long lines waiting for people to go through. Um, a lot of these lines can pass through. Up to a thousand people an hour through a line. So I mean, you're talking about people walking right through. So our goal is to keep lines flowing. We don't want to search bags. We don't want to, we don't want people bringing large bags to events. Um, but we don't want to um have people, you know, stopping off and emptying their pockets and different things. Uh, and these are not traditional metal detectors that we're talking about. Um, I want to make sure that we're keeping that clear. We're not using um traditional metal detector type systems. Um, so. Once we go in the direction of ordering a system. Uh, we would then need the vendor, our lead constable, our SROs and our safeguards to really develop a process. What it would look like into entry into an event. And really making sure that we're utilizing systems as 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 efficient as possible. Um, because really we don't want to take away from the overall experience here, but we just want to make sure that people attending our games on our campus are going to be as safe as possible. If that, you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Weller. Questions for Mr. Weller for this report. Mrs. Starkey.
Um, we got the email with just the specifics of where the AEDs will be at the high school and stuff. Where are they at Chipman? Like, is there a similar plan at Chipman to ensure that those are covered, those students are covered too?
So currently there's a one mobile um AED device that's used for sports.
At Chipman?
At Chipman. Um, there is one um that is um in the front of the building and one towards the cafeteria. Um, with that, we did expand to have another AED device put in Chipman West right inside the door. Um, so people, so folks at events have quick access to it. We didn't want to have too many mobile devices because as things get carried, they could get damaged, they could get broken, and these are pretty expensive and complex devices. Um, and then we're going to utilize the mobile device with the team that's going off campus, the soccer team that's going either to Deck or to Harrington Parks and Rec. There is an AED device at Deck, but. Our soccer coaches probably would not have access to that building during certain hours, so we want to make sure that those coaches have access to the AED there. Um, at the high school, um, we relocated, um, one of the issues that we ran into was. The N AED devices on the trainer's cart. But during some of our act, summer activities, the trainers are not there. Um, so we did place a AED device inside the locker room underneath the stadium. Um, we did not want to keep these devices outside because we didn't want them to get stolen, damaged, um, weathered. Um, different things like that. So we did relocate um the device there. So then the coaches doing offseason workouts would have quick access to the AED devices there.
And who's responsible? Like, let's just say the Chipman soccer team, when they go off campus, is the coach responsible for that?
Correct. That's going to be the protocol that we're going to use. So basically, the coach will be given this AED device to carry down to Deck uh for that event. Um, students, you know, I. It's difficult to give a coach and a every coach an AED device and have them go go off somewhere. Um, because um. A lot of these things need to be updated. They need to sort of the equipment on and stays good and things like that. Um, so you know, really, and also too, when they do go to other events, those buildings also have AED devices, so.
About training?
That's uh.
That is part of the training that the coaches um should be going through with the first aid and and learning those. How to do that, and that is something that I'm following up with the nurses and making sure that we're getting our coaches and making sure that everybody's trained on how to use these devices.
It hasn't been in the past.
Yeah.
Anyone else have questions? Uh, so the detection systems, um, so I think it's a great step. Um, and yes, I know it's being talked about other places in the states, so I'm glad to hear it's here as well. Um. Did everyone see the ones at the fair?
I didn't go. Honey, we got six, we got six people out there. Let's just keep it real, okay?
Is that this, because they were, I mean, they were very portable, they were interesting, um, you walked through it, you almost felt like nothing of it, really. So they made sure when you walked in that you walked on this side of it and not that side of it. I mean, they were.
The model that we are looking at is the model that they used at the fair.
Okay.
Um, so we had, we've explored several different things of trying to see if there was a company that would come in and set these up for each event. And then take them down and we don't have to worry about it. So the fair uses like a traveling, like I, it almost like they travel with fairs and carnivals and they set these devices up. At those events and they're in and out in ten days. To find somebody who could do it for this football game, that football game, wrestling event. Um, what have you, those things, bless you, those things did not, um. Those vendors did not exist, um, but we are looking at the same uh type of of system that was at the fair.
So what's the, what what's the expenditure that we're looking at and what will that get us?
So basically, it would be the type of vendor that we're looking at right now will be about forty five thousand dollars for two um sets of.
Two sets.
Two sets, so two lanes um of of weapon detection systems. And then also too, we would have a one that would come with that in case somebody were.
One with each.
Yes, yes, one with each. Um, like I said, training with our constables through the vendor. Um, with our SROs on all those proper procedures and protocols to keep lines moving, but also too, not to bring drama onto itself. Um, we have learned that like, um, for example, um. At, I don't know if you guys have ever been to a football game in Middletown High School, uh, they use cowbells, uh, the cowbells pop. The AI detection system, so they learn quickly that, hey, when you're getting ready to go through the line, get your cowbell out, show it. So then that way, you know, you can kind of work so that the system, they can kind of make those adjustments and to make sure that those things do occur.
Um, so then initial thoughts on placement and use of the two systems?
So we've. And this is where we're going to have, we're coming together as a team. Um, when the, when the constables return in as a school safety team, because we've really batted about two different ideas. Um, keeping the gates, the entry gates in like the football stadium where they're at the same. Or do we enter through that big open gate and have that as one entry point? And um have the paramedic park right outside the stadium right there. Um. So those are things that we really want to work with the vendor. Um, because also too, that sidewalk right there is narrow there where those press boxes are, I mean, where those entry gates are to that um concession stand. And so we really want to make sure that, you know, people can still have access and are not tripping and and things like that. Um, but those are, those are conversations and procedures that we will be working.
So it sounds like the initial thought is both at the stadium.
Yes.
Both sets at the stadium.
Yes, and then then move them to the gym. When the winter season, um, these systems, so like each uh pole or stanchion is about twenty five pounds. So they they're pretty easy to mobilize, pretty easy to move up. Um, and they're mobile, you can use them indoors or outdoors, um, they can take on the weather. And we can also um dress them up in our logo to make it look um more inviting and less like a metal detector.
And not to get too far ahead of ourselves, um, clearly these would have to be tested, tried, true and tested, but um. I would anticipate it's not, if if they worked suc- successfully and at that price point. It's probably not too far of a jump to consider putting them at the school entryways for daily usage.
So that is not a conversation that we're, we've had at this point. You know, when we talk about using them at at the school or for the entry points, um, really staffing them. Monitoring them and training with them, um, but that is a conversation, you know. I would really like to see um how it goes with the with the rush of a football stadium and getting people in there. Um, to see how it goes. Um, also too, you know, the nice part, I don't want to say the nice part, but the part about this is too, is that if we were to have. Um, a a threat to the building. Um, or a situation where we need to use them, we can mobilize them and utilize with our staff to bring the kids into the building. And maybe use two entry points into the building if we needed to, whether it be the middle school, the high school or or any school. So we have that ability to mobilize them when needed, um, no matter what the circumstance would be. Um, so for example, during during um the football season, they would not be permanently. No matter what the circumstance would be. So for example, during during the football season, they would not be permanently stuck there. In in the place. After each football game, we pick them up, we put them, we store them. But if we needed to use them in the building for something, we could.
And the last thing I have is just. Look looking at the timetable that you're looking at, is this, are you striving for the start of football season, very first game? Or what do you think you're looking at, Dustin?
That would be my, that's that's really what I'm aiming for at this point. Our first football game of the season is going to be a pretty large one. I'm anticipating that, and I think it would be a a good idea to start there. I don't want to pop things in the middle of the season if I can help it. But I would really like to try to. Try to get this going as soon as possible.
Yeah, I like the word you used earlier. I mean, I think really, you know, with the right visibility of it, these become less of a detection system and more of a deterrent system. So. That's fantastic. Anybody have anything else?
This is just like looking at the football schedule, like there's a scrimmage. Here. Like on the twenty-second, I'd be interested in seeing like a. Practice run, like with a scrimmage that's found in as many people, just because that first game is Caesar Rodney and it could be a lot. So I don't know if the first time we try it, having a huge game like that, I don't know. I don't know if we can have it by then or not, but it'd be nice to practice with it with a smaller crowd.
Right now, the vendor that we're looking at is six to eight weeks out. However, what I did was I I'm trying to say, hey, we have the sixth and the thirteenth are the first two dates that we would need them. Is there any way that we could, you know, use one of your existing devices for those two dates? While we get these in shipment and I'm in talks for them. I think at this point, because one of the things is too, is I've been told sure you can use it for the price.
Always.
Always. And so, you know, what I what I'm trying to do is. Our main point of 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 training is going to be with our constables. I think that's a good place to start is getting them trained on it. And also to making sure that we have game staff there that are that are able to work through it. I would love in a perfect scenario to set them up, whether it be a soccer game or whatever, to have that test run. To get, just to make sure that everything is lined up and calibrated. But right now, I'm I'm really trying to aim at that first game against Caesar Rodney, just because of our timeline.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weller. We're up to section four, discussion items, four point one, Dr. Lucas' application for a certificate of necessity.
Thank you, President Dempsey. As everyone here who's ever been in Chipman, especially during lunch, knows. We're in a desperate need for some more space over there. So we have for the last several months been looking at potentially adding on to the cafeteria. Adding some multipurpose space that can be used both for overflow of the cafeteria and then for having some multipurpose space for program. So we are submitting, we are proposing and asking for approval to submit a certificate of necessity for major capital funds. As you know, with a major fund, a major capital funding item. That would relieve us of about eighty percent of the cost, which the state would incur. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Kalman as the true expert here. Within this topic, and he's going to share this certificate of necessity application that we have completed to be submitted before the end of the month.
Yeah, and and. Just to reiterate too, this, when we submitted a certificate of necessity, I believe it was three years ago for the roof projects. That we got turned down by DOE. This addition was actually one of the items that was included in that, and that got turned down along with it. But. I kind of got word from DOE that had this been the only item in there, it might have got pushed through because this one does address capacity issue, which is priority one for DOE. And so. And typically, the roofs fall under priority two, which is safety and security, and those have not been getting funding. For CNs at the at the Department of Education. And so, as Dr. Lucas alluded to. You know, we're we're trying to address several different problems there at the middle school. Two of the most prominent being the capacity issue of that cafeteria. Of which this would provide overflow for that. The other being there's just not a lot of extracurricular space. In that school for after-school activities. I I know we have the cheerleaders using the cafeteria and there's, you know, the wrestlers are trying to find a place. So, you know, we would have that as a space for extracurricular activity use after school. And then also, we could use that as. During school, we could use that as flexible classroom space as well. And so I made sure that when we asked RG Architects to draw this up. To include that this could potentially be used as, you know, classroom space. And we would like the ability to potentially. Divide it down the center so you can separate it into two sections because we're talking about, I think it's around thirty-two hundred square feet of addition there. So when we went to RG Architects with this. We didn't want to go very expensive. We wanted to. You know, stay fairly cheap. And and one of the reasons we looked at that area there right next to Chipman, that's now the outdoor. Kind of picnic eating area is because we could utilize that that brick wall structure. There as the foundation to put up. The addition. And then they would just add spots there such that. Moving from the cafeteria into this addition would be all indoors. And so. As kids, you know, filed in for. Lunch, you know, they could even continue down into this. Extra space addition down there. And so one of the things that RG Architects pointed out here in their their summary here. Is that the current building's cafeteria is three thousand eight hundred and thirty square feet, of which. The State of Delaware School Construction Technical Assistance Manual recommends five thousand eight hundred square feet for. A cafeteria for a school of that size. So right now, the cafeteria is two-thirds of its recommended size. According to the the School Construction Technical Assistance Manual. So the other thing is, is we're in a position right now. That number fluctuates from year to year in terms of major capital projects. And so major capital improvement projects, the threshold for those start at one million dollars. And so this one, we're looking at, you know, in the vicinity of two million. And so right now, that state-local split is eighty percent. State, twenty percent local, and it will never get better than that. So that's the least amount we could ever expect to pay. So with our portion being roughly four hundred thousand dollars for this addition. We would be looking at. Typically, you would be looking at a referendum to raise the local funds for this, but because we have three million dollars in the bank from the Kent County Impact Fee. We would be looking at to to draw down four hundred thousand of that Kent County Impact Fee, such that we would not even have to go to a referendum. Because we wouldn't be creating any additional indebtedness to the district. Because we wouldn't have to float any local bonds for this. Because that's really what drives the necessity to go to a referendum is the the need to go out and. To get those local bonds. Now, the state will still have to do their end for the the one point six million. But in terms of our local portion, we can cover that locally.
So if I can stop and ask a question about that. So. Last, when we when we last went through this initiative. It was this and a few other things, and we still anticipated that we were going to be covering it through other funds. But at that point, we had been talking about a zero-cost referendum in that it was going to be required. Is there something different with this?
Yeah, so we did get a reading from our legal counsel on that. Okay. I asked that specific question. As to whether or not we would be required to go out to a referendum vote, because I had heard different stories from different business managers throughout the state. And so our lawyer did tell us, he gave us the reference in Delaware code. Such that if we're not incurring any additional local indebtedness, that there is no need to go for a referendum. We can source that locally. So.
So the path we had hit would have been an unnecessary one last time, had we correct proceeded, okay?
Although I had my hunches back then that we wouldn't have to go out and refer it as well. Because of that issue.
Okay, thank you.
But so the deadline to turn in a certificate of necessity to the Department of Education is August thirty-first. So. And then their process is they review these over the next few months. And then they will make a recommendation in there to the Office of Management and Budget as to which projects they want to fund. From a. A statewide standpoint in terms of capital improvement projects. And so then whatever they recommend as moving forward, end up in the typically in the governor's recommended budget. Now, the nice thing about this particular one is it's it's very low in in cost. Probably compared to a lot of the other school districts. We're only talking about from the state side, one point six million dollars. Versus, you know, some of these other schools districts that might be looking to build a new school. And asking for, you know, sixty, eighty, a hundred and something million dollars, so. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Kalman or Dr. Lucas on the certificate of necessity?
The one question is, what are we waiting for to make this a final versus the draft that we have tonight? Response from the board, or are we waiting for something else about early?
In terms of the package that you have in front of you? Yeah, well, they just submitted it to us a few days ago. So. We haven't had that much time to to digest it all. We just turned it around and presented it as fast as we could. So we'll have to go through it and 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 find any edits or. Correct any mistakes and and kind of dress it up.
So as far as the numbers go, so I I was looking at the the separate attachment that was sent and then is like page. It's the one that looks like this, the kind of spreadsheet that's inserted. So and that seemed to have a final number of one point. Just shy of one point four million.
Correct.
So what is that compared to the one point eight that you just mentioned?
So when you see the one point four million, if you continue further into into the documents. They show that as the construction cost, and then all the other six hundred thousand is various architecture and engineering fees, contingencies.
Okay.
Audit fees. So site development costs. So there's different other costs involved in there that make up the rest of that.
Okay. You see that, okay?
Any other questions on this topic at this point?
So this this is on the agenda later. Tonight for a vote. But I think the recommendation is going to be that we pull it back, we at least table that. We let the the administration, having heard that they haven't really had more than a few days to delve into it. To be able to come back to us in two weeks at our next meeting to make the final proposal, final recommendation and for the board to vote at that. Does anyone see it differently?
Okay, any final discussion on this topic tonight? All right, thank Chris Kelly. Thank you, Dr. Lucas. All right, we are to some action items. Start with section seven, Mrs. Starkey.
Section seven point one, a minute, and I'm motioning through resolution seven point one as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero.
Section eight personnel resignation to make a motion. We approve resolution eight point one through eight point eight as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero.
Section nine personnel retirements sadly make the motion to approve resolution nine point one as written.
Sadly seconded. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I will sadly call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero.
Section eleven personnel transfers and make a motion. We approve resolution eleven point one or eleven point nine as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion in that motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section thirteen personnel offers of employment and make a motion with through resolution thirteen point one through thirteen point one eight as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero.
Section fifteen personnel leaves of absence and make a motion. We approve resolution fifteen point one as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero.
Staying in section fifteen, personnel leaves of absence and make a motion. We approve resolution fifteen point two and fifteen point three as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Any extensions? Motion fails zero to four.
Section nineteen personnel appointments and make a motion. We approve resolution nineteen point one.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
Staying in section nineteen, personnel appointments and make a motion with through resolution nineteen point two as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries three to zero with one extension.
Section twenty-one, other business and make emotionally approve resolution twenty-one point one, school choice as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
And twenty-one point two, I make a motion. We table the application for certificate of necessity.
Second. Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero.
And finally, section twenty-three, other business financial reports and make a motion to approve resolution twenty-three point one as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. Thank you, Mr. Rao. We're up to section twenty-five, board report. And other discussion items. Start with twenty-five point one, Delaware School Board Association, Mrs. McCloskey.
We have none. When is, when is that final meeting or the meeting?
I was going to go this year.
I was, I was. It was like the middle of the day and it was, it wasn't. It's like on Friday or.
All right, any questions for Mrs. McCloskey? All right, thank you, Mrs. McCloskey. Twenty-five point two, Legislative Committee. Dr. Wyatt is not here. Mr. Rao, I don't know if you have any.
I have not met either.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Rao? Thank you, Mr. Rao. Twenty-five point three, go to the order. Opportunity for members to address other topics not covered elsewhere in the agenda. The floor is open.
Just add one thing, piggyback one. Topic, there's mentioned a couple of other areas this evening. So I attended Kent County Levy Court Tuesday night with Dr. Lucas as well. It was a pleasure to be there with those two coaches and to see that his award given. Even though they pulled us up and made us take photographs and made us speak into the microphone, which you all know I love. And the other thing, though, while we were there, as Dustin mentioned, while I was there. Fire chief Chris Cloud from Felton Community Fire Company did present me with an AED as a donation from the fire company for use within the district as we see fit. So I know that the. Administration, Dr. Lucas is planning to send the fire company chief cloud and President Simple send them a thank you letter. I did want to publicly. Address that and thank them for their support. That is all I have. Anyone else? All right, with that, I do not believe we have a need for executive session. Dr. Lucas or Mr. Mormon?
We do not.
Any board member with a need for executive session? With that, then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Before we take a vote, I will add our next meeting will be two weeks from this evening. Thursday, August twenty-second. We will be right back here, seven PM in the district office. With that, all in favor? Uh with that, all in favor for adjournments? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? The extensions. Which carries four to zero. Thank you all very much. Enjoy the rest of your fleeting days of summer.